President, Members of Council. The Italian Village would recommend that we not too hasty look at the Community Development Act until the program dollar amounts and progress is spelled out in the society. I would like to go back to the beginning of this month's review, what took place. On May the 6th.
The town administration deals with the entirety of some of the other fine work we get, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Now, must there be subsequent legislation to implement the Development Act program in its specific form? It varies quite slightly, much the same way as the Cedar Program. Now, I think when the Mancar Program first was introduced, there was a resolution which authorized us to go into the program, and then there was subsequent legislation which implemented in detail the allocation of the specific funds. Now, I just thought I'd clear that up tonight to get some sort of a blueprint on the current aspect of this situation.
Yeah, I think I can clarify that a little bit for you. Some time ago, legislation was passed by council authorizing us to submit an application for funds. That application was as presented to council and the citizens at that time, and it detailed in general what these funds would be used for in the various categories. And it was determined at that time that certain funds would be available for each of eight program areas. Now, since that time, the detailed recommendations have been prepared for these eight areas and presented to council. I might clarify for the members of the audience the little confusion surrounding the dates of submission and of the ordinance and its appearance before city council agenda and the public hearing two days later. I might remind everybody that that legislation was submitted to council with a request that it be tabled. We request, the Department of Development requested that city council table it for one week until such time as the public hearing, which was scheduled for May 7th, could take place, and that is exactly what happened. Now, I think that an answer to your question, Mr. Portman, directly is that probably at this time, this legislation could be termed not necessary. The application that you authorize as submission is prepared and will be submitted to HUD as soon as they will accept it. However, we would prefer to revise that application at this time to reflect some of the things this detailed program indicates. Now, in addition to the acceptance of this legislation, as any individual program proceeds, we will have to come before council with the request for funds for that individual program and receive your authorization to proceed with that one.
Now, this is what I thought. Now, you really get down to the nitty-gritty of this thing. Just what and why? Should there be or is there any conflict between some of the requests expressed by the people in the affected areas and the administration's presentation? It seems to me that in all good common sense, the administration and the council want this program to be implemented with the acceptance of the people who are its recipients. I mean, I see no reason unless there's some question of law that the people affected shouldn't have the funds administered to their advantage in their specific area. If it's possible, I don't care if they want to do something, say the Italians on the area or the Victorian area, I couldn't care less. If this is the way they want it, let them have it. It can be done. Now, I notice that in some areas, they don't want this housing council. Others do. It doesn't have to be uniform. Now, it seems to me that I'm willing to administer this program according to the way these people want to live. I'm sure they want to improve their neighborhood, otherwise they wouldn't be here. And when you say they want to say so, there's some things we cannot do under the law and under the charter and state law has pointed out in some of our meetings. So I'd like to get this resolved on the basis of this plain order of common sense within the framework of federal law, the state law, and the state legislature. That's my position on this thing. And if we have to have a detailed budget before we have to vote on subsequent legislation, let's have it. It could take a long time to do it, and we're going to ask for anyone to think about it. I mean, we have to do that so that the auditor, am I right, Mr. Laris? The auditor set up specific code auditing accounts for each expenditure. So we have to have it even as far as the auditor is concerned. And before he gets it, we're going to get it, and everybody can work at it. That's contained in this memo that I sent you, I believe, that there should be a budget allocation subsequently before we appropriate the money, and even if you don't give to us, the auditor's going to ask for it anyway. See what I mean?
Oh, yes.
So I think the figure we resolve is, I think a lot of this is semantics, if you ask me, and there's possibly a lot of misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure about the one part of the question. This is essentially a budget, which is being presented to the community through council for your approval.
But it's not a detailed budget.
Well, it's a-
It's a broad category.
Yes, it's a, we're zeroing in on some details, but, yes, it's pretty detailed.
All right. Now, what about the budget that some of the people in specific areas are not in favor?
I'm not sure.
And what's wrong with they're not liking it? This is my thought.
No, I certainly, that's what we're here this evening for, to find out where the problems are, and if there are some things that don't work here. You're correct. A lot of the concern a lot of people talk about when they talk about the budget that's being submitted, possibly is concerning to you at all just by more information, is that while we have a clearly deep, this is a much more detailed program than was a general program. And as we develop each of these steps, we are working with the people, bringing the various community groups along with us, so they understand what's involved in these recommendations. And that as we buy the concept, for example, to get going with the housing counseling program, then the next step will be to, in great detail, work out exactly what that housing counseling program would be. And we would again be working with the appropriate community representatives in the development of that detail, and then we would bring that detailed program to council for final action and authorization for specific funds to be used for the various items involved in housing counseling. Very much the same way that we will do with the recreational facility.
I'm Jeff Scott. I live in 325 West 8th Avenue, Charkham, at the Paris West side of the area, North side of the council. And I think your main legislative need is not to want the housing council, and apparently on this earth, we'll say that so. And the other matters that I had to talk to you, each area of the program have already been considered, so we have no further explaining of that, but we-
Can you move on to the next speaker? She's still there.
Fred Gibbs.
I'd like to address myself to several things that were just reviewed here momentarily in discussion among each other. Particularly, I want to talk about housing counseling as it affects the university area of the state generally, and I want to talk about the process on which, especially the university area priorities, which are those lump sum figures that Mr. Shinniger referred to, have been given to this council. The third thing I want to talk about is why it's not satisfactory to many of us that we are given the reassurance that before anything's expended, we can come back here and see detailed budgets. I'd like to begin by saying that the reason I'm here is that the past few months, the community in which I live has spent hour after hour of meetings attended by, in some cases, hundreds of people to plan for the use of community development money in our community. Those plans were sent through a representative of the university, the development department, a planner, back to the director of that department and his staff for review. And each time, on three occasions, it came back with modifications, which had subsequently made meetings, were with only one exception unanimous, without exception rejected. Now, particularly what I'm talking about are budget items in the university program area, that build the university area program area, concerning housing counseling, concerning high street development, and concerning the university district organization. At those meetings, I'll use housing counseling as an example, our community said, and again, I think they were among the best attended meetings in the city, it was among the most active participation, I believe, as far as I know, of any of the program areas in that community. Our community at those meetings said heatedly and again emphasized without a single dissent that we did want housing counseling in our priorities. Not only did we want them, but we wanted them to a greater extent that is reflected in the budget that you have in front of you. Our community sat down and designed a three-year projected budget for community development funds in our area, so that we allowed ourselves the right to play with what we could do this year, what we could do the second year, and what we could do the third year, so we could accommodate all the different needs in the area. In our first year, we put top priority on several items. Number one was housing rehabilitation, but it wasn't housing rehabilitation for the single unit homeowner occupied dwelling. We live in a community where over eighty percent of the population consists of tenants, where most of the tenants live in multi-unit dwellings. So to make sense in terms of rehabilitation, the money needed to go to landlords, who could then afford, especially poor landlords, could afford to meet the obligations imposed on them by the housing code, because that's where most of our people live. They lived in substandard housing, and according to the city's own statistics, it's among the worst housing areas in the city. We needed to get that money where most people lived, and so we put a priority on housing rehab for multi-unit dwellings, and we put a priority of seventy-seven thousand dollars on counseling for tenants and landlords to help tenants, for example, become aware of how to use the mechanisms available to them to improve the housing stock. Now, I would be happy if people are interested to explain exactly what kind of counseling we're talking about, how it works, but I would suggest to you that this body has a lot of experience in it. Among the organizations which was instrumental in working on proposals, specific proposals, I might add, that were submitted to the Development Department for housing counseling is the tenant union. Tenant Union has been commended by this body unanimously in a resolution passed in nineteen seventy-two for its housing work, and has been instrumental in, and I think, a lot of progress in the city along with other housing organizations, private housing organizations like the Housing Opportunity Center, in doing the kind of work that we're talking about. That community made its priorities known, sent them downtown each time they came back different. Each time, the city's counter recommendations were rejected, and we resubmitted priorities for our area. They always included housing counseling. They did not include in the first year a high street development expenditure. They always included the university district organization and the community center. We did, however, allow for high street development in the second and third years. Now we find ourselves in a situation where we are loggerheads with the development department. They don't accept our priorities, and we don't accept their priorities. So we come to city council, because we think you have to be the body which acts as the mediator, because you represent the communities as a whole, and you certainly represent our community. Our community has been consistent and clear in what its priorities are. At this point, there are a couple of alternatives for the university area priorities, and we think the priorities which were set in our community meeting should be adopted by this city council, not the priorities set by the development department. I'm here to suggest that for this area especially, because it's a unique housing situation, its unique housing problems, and the high tenancy rate, that we realize that a rehab program for multifamily units not tied to a substantial housing counseling program in that area would not make sense. We asked this council to reinstate the priorities that we made in our proposals, which were a greater amount of rehab money to multifamily units and a significant expenditure, we specifically recommended seventy-seven thousand dollars, for housing counseling. Now, I wish I could say that that's all I need to ask you to do is reinstate the priorities and let's leave it at that, but there's a little more to it. In all honesty, out of the process which I have just been through along with a lot of other people in the university area, there's a certain amount of distrust which has been created concerning the development department. It may be unjustified, it may be justified, I don't know. Obviously, there are two sides to it. All I know is that we consistently and unanimously made recommendations concerning two items: housing counseling, the amount of it, rehab money, and a need for community participation. Because along with the money allocations that we recommended, we made one principle absolutely clear in all of our meetings, and that is if you want community development to work, you've got to take advantage of two things: community participation in the planning process and use of the available community resources in the delivery of the services. Particularly, to use as an example, the tenant union. We are fortunate to have in our community an organization that's been around for several years, as other areas in the city are fortunate to have similar organizations like the Housing Opportunity Center, which have provided some of the services that the community wants, which is familiar with the community because it's located there and employs local residents there, and which in terms of cost would be enormous savings to this city, because there would be no startup costs, no training period, and no long adjustment period when people in the community would have to evaluate the organization, learn to know them, and while they learn to know the area's problems. So we asked the city to do two things. Number one, ask them to accept our priorities in terms of the amount of money, and we also asked them to accept our proposal that for our community at least, priority in the use of those money should be given to contracting with pre-existing organizations with experience which are located in the community. Not only because it's good for our community, because our community trusts those organizations and knows them, and they know more about our community than a city would in a new program, but also because it would save the city money at the long run. We have found since that time that both those requests have been rejected. Not only are the priorities reflected in the budget you have in front of you, not the priorities selected by the community in terms of dollar amounts, but there is no commitment in that proposal to use available community organizations and resources to deliver the services. We don't think it makes sense. I'm here tonight to ask you to reinstate the priorities and to incorporate in your approval or modifications of the plan that has been submitted to you, sort of an outgrowth of a proposal, I think, that Mr. Portman has suggested. And that is that the money be allocated in a sum certain for each line item, and that in our community, housing counseling should be one of those line items, and it should be more than the amount presently provided for. And provide that in addition to allocating that money, that this council request, the development department, to submit or request from the university area commission, detailed proposals on how the housing council money and how the housing rehab money should be used, through what mechanisms, through what organizations, with what restrictions, that those recommendations be sent to a representative organization of all the program areas for comments and submission to this council for final approval, when the details of the proposals have been developed, not just by the development department, but by the development department along with organizations like the commission and a citywide representative body of program areas. We do this, I suggest this for two reasons. Number one, because in all honesty, there is some mistrust, and if you simply pass a budget and put some figures on it, especially if you pass a budget without a specific line item for housing counseling, we don't feel assured that there will be the kind of community participation later, because there hasn't been that kind of community participation in the past. We want some assurance that there will be some real meaningful input into the actual detailed proposals of the use of these funds, because after all, they're intended for our communities, and they're supposed to do a job where we live. And secondly, we want some assurance, if you share with us the notion that where there are available community resources, they should be taken advantage of, we want some assurance that that will be done. I do not think you can substitute, I think as a previous speaker from Italian Village pointed out, you cannot substitute the success which has been experienced by use of people in the community working on their own counseling and working on their own problems with a new city administrative program, which just in terms of the time of learning the problems and getting to know the community, and in terms of the setup costs, is terribly, terribly wasteful. So my request to you is, this evening, if it's at all possible, that the priorities that are in that budget right now be rejected, they be amended to reflect the priorities that were unanimously and repeatedly, again and again, adopted by the university area task force, with the necessary provisions to require, A, that in preparation of detailed plans for the use of those monies, such as housing counseling, a plan be worked on by representative community organizations such as the university area commission, they go to a representative citywide body for recommendation to this council. And at last, some priority be given in the delivery of these services to using pre-existing organizations in the communities which have experience in the problem areas.
Mr. Gibbs, I sent Mr. Hubble at three point, four point, I'm sorry, four point recommendation the other day, point we have which recommends that we require the department to develop a working group that represents each of the program areas to help set housing rehabilitation assistance programs for each area. This was contained in a message to Mr. Hubble the other day. I don't know whether you know that or not, but it's down there. There's no consensus at this time as how this program will work, and so forth and so on. Now-
You talked about a list of recommendations, priorities. Where, who did you send them?
Well, the task force meetings were held and conducted by Ray, the development department staff-
Were they sent to city council?
Excuse me.
Were they sent to city council?
Those priorities were sent through the process being forgiven, which was to be sent to the development department through the area plan.
So I didn't-
I might add one comment. I'm particularly concerned that we're talking about a program for a particular area, like the university area, which has its own unique problems and its own unique organization, that I think there should might be some review by a citywide representative body, but there also needs to be some creative work done and detailed work done by representative bodies in that community, like the university area commission.
The next speaker is Marilyn Kellner.
I am speaking for the Columbus Tenant Union. My name is Marilyn Kellner, and I've been working with the Columbus Tenant Union for the past four years, since its inception, and for five years in the area of housing counseling in Columbus, Ohio. We have heard that there are those who believe that tenant counseling is not necessary in community development, that housing rehabilitation can actually go on without tenant counseling, without tenants understanding their rights and responsibilities. We think this is absolutely absurd. If you look to the sources of housing deterioration, you would see firstly, they are landlords unable to rehabilitate their homes because of a lack of resources and financial burden, and secondly, landlords unwilling to improve their property because they want to put as little resources in and money into the property while getting as much profit out of it as they can. So at the same time, that you have to make money available to those who cannot afford it, and you must also, at the same time, have an educated consumer to put pressure on those landlords that are unwilling to keep the property up. Cosmetic beautification can only go so far. Physical improvements can only go so far.
The model neighborhood assembly raises the question that the planning of projects, social service projects, the decision that those projects were, the decision made, choosing the projects, might clearly cut across some of the HUD guidelines stipulates, one, there has to be a detailed plan of a phasing out of model cities, and two, until such time as that plan is actually completed, that the citizen participation mechanism continues in effect.
I believe that question has been pretty well answered in a letter that was sent to the MNA from the HUD area office. And in that letter, the director of the area office, Mr. Leitens, detailed and gave an opinion regarding the requirement for the citizen participation element as it applied to CD funds. And it was stated in that letter that that citizen participation process detailed in the model neighborhood, in the model cities plan, known as MNA, did not have to apply to funds utilized for model cities projects out of the CD Act.
I agree with him, but you recognize the danger of the fact that some carryover funds sitting in model cities today, there's a serious possibility in specific projects that those funds will be mingled with CDA. And at that point in time, I think the city finds themselves in a posture that wouldn't be, wouldn't be too comfortable.
I have no understanding that there are any funds available to co-mingle, councilman. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hubble. Program. In that regard, the CDA fund, it's not only they have to tell us, they got to tell all these folks here, okay? And that's what the, that's what the area record said. He said the citizen participation under the community development means that the entire program, okay, however the money is given, cannot just be shared, in this instance, with the model neighborhood assembly, it must be shared through citizen participation protocol. Okay, that means all the folks here have to be- Okay, that means all the folks here have to be aware of that situation also. And that's assuming that all the folks indeed do have the, 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 number one, indeed do have a plan, and indeed have had at a time discussing program. I think this is the one time that this has come forth in one of these kind of public meetings. So I'm saying citizen participation at that level in community development, okay, begins to run.
Our next speaker is Tom Guire.
I'm a resident of the university area community, and I'm also a member of the East Framed Ed, Campus Citizens Council. I'd like to address my remarks to the issue of trust raised by Mr. Hiddle. Seems to me that, all that I've heard, in all of the meetings, both in the community and down here at the council, there's been a real big attempt to really dodge the main policy issues at stake here, in terms of who's going to control the funds, who's going to decide how the funds are going to be distributed. For the information of those council members not present at last week's forum, I'd just like to summarize some of the things that were said by the people that came down here. First of all, there are a lot more people here, a lot greater representation of the community. And some people got to thank the development department for the inclusion of particular programs within their operating area. Other people got to express their business interest in the allocation of funds. The rest of the people seem to stand up and say the development department wasn't doing what they wanted them to do. And, uh, we, I came down to the meeting last week under the impression it was a meeting of city council, held in city council chambers, notice was posted through the media. I thought it was going to be a city council meeting, which came down, substantial number of people, I'm sure, came down with that in mind. We find it wasn't a council meeting, but this is the council meeting, and now we find the two councils are absent, and the president of the council has just left for another commitment. Well, is that an attempt to dodge the issue? I don't know. Seems to me that it is. But, uh, really, this whole process raises a lot of questions, and I don't know. First, the development department seems to me has structured the flow of information in a way that really limits the input from the community. First of all, the, uh, the areas were broken down into fairly small subdivisions for most of the parts of the city. Seems to me that this is nothing more than an attempt to keep the people separated so that they won't be able to get together and decide what it is that they want to do in terms of policy matters, in terms of who is going to control the funds, who's going to administer the funds, who's going to make the final determinations of how the funds are going to be spent. See, my position is that the members of the community in large should make this decision, that the development department should implement, implement under the supervision of members of the community. That doesn't seem to be the position of the development department at all. They rather characterize the, uh, the separation of power, if you will, is that they'll make all the decisions after, uh, pretty much pro forma meetings in the community. But, couple of things I'd like to point out about those particular meetings, the ones held in the university area, that they were attended by, I consider, what I consider to be a broad spectrum of community interest, that landlords were present, tenants were present, businessmen were present, homeowners were there, and just folks. They expressed their views, the issues were debated, and we came to a resolution. And with one exception, those, uh, the community determination within the university community was unanimous, that we wanted the tenants to be funded. At that, at the meetings that I attended, it was decided that we want a UDO to, uh, to have a significant input, if not, if not control over the administration of the funds. Position of the development department is, as we find out after several weeks, that they are going to decide how the money is going to be spent, and they are going to supervise, and they are going to administer, and we'll get nothing but report of what it is that they're doing, or, I might add, what it is that they've already done. Seems to me that if the council does not accept the proposal offered by Mr. Hiddle, it'll be doing nothing more than rubber stamping that. And if you do that, then you're no more deserving of our trust than the development department is at this point. Another thing is, um, one question that I have for Mr. Huddle is that with respect to the use of community resources, the, we have existing tenants in the university area and has been operating in that area for several years, the tenant union. These people are set up, they know how to counsel, they've been doing, the point's been made that, uh, you don't have to set anything else up, that that would be a mervous expense. I'd like to hear Mr. Huddle's view on what, let me say something else before I ask this. That the tenant union not only has been counseling within the university area, but it's getting, been getting referrals from a housing opportunity center, the housing department here in the city, settlement houses around the city, and it's been getting referrals from the development department itself. Now, I'd like to know just how come you people cut the tenant union out of the funding?
Council, would you like to respond at this time? Yes, we did not recommend that, uh, the tenant union be funded, and there's not a recommendation proceeding that that occurred. Frankly, the tenant union has, is only, and touches upon only one very small, but not minor, but only one very small component of a total constant housing counseling program. There are many other things that need to be considered in a housing counseling program, fire safety, uh, police security, uh, maintenance of, of equipment, landscaping, uh, how to do it yourself, uh, projects, uh, many other kinds of things that affect a homeowner as , uh, is involved in the total picture of housing. If I, your similar protection since it, which the tenant union primarily addresses itself to, its tenant landlord relationship is only one small component of a housing counseling program. Now, we recognize the tenant union has been in business for quite some time and has done an effective job with tenant landlord relationship, and apparently has established that, uh, I don't know the exact figures, that, uh, number of families that have actually been touched by the organization, but apparently it is considerable. The, uh, we would hope that, uh, they would continue doing this good work for the community under the present organization. We would see that, uh, this is not a high priority item to fund an existing organization of this type with the Community Development Act funds, which are so severely limited.
I made, I attempted to make the point earlier that it seemed to me that a lot is being done to obscure and dodge the issues here, and the only some, the only content that I can give from your comments is no content. The question, sir, was why? I, I, I did not discern any, any address by you to that particular question. You've recognized, you say apparently that the tenant union is professional and competent, and yet you say that you want them to operate on a volunteer basis. My question is, why are they not being funded under your program?
I explained, I think I explained very well why our recommendation is, was not, was not to be funded.
Couldn't you fund them to do that one protected or function?
Anything is possible, Council.
The other, one, one point that you made in, in your discourse on the, on the tenant union is that, uh, well, I've lost the point. Here can be, it seems to me that we're chasing our own tail, that we can't really pin people down as to what, we can pin you down to exactly what it is that you're doing, because you have to present that in documentation. We haven't been able to pin you down as to exactly why. Seems to me that the interest of the community has been expressed, the interest of the development department is not. I don't see any other interest of the development department other than developing the community. And it seems to me that the community ought to develop itself in the manner that it wishes to develop itself, and that we should not be forced to come down here and, and, and come down and beg on our hands and knees to ask you people to do just what the hell it is that we want to do. Why? Why should we have to come down here? Why is it that you can't just implement our recommendations? And most of those recommendations were unanimous. And this is, this question isn't confined just to the university area. This question, there were a substantial number of people from every group that I, that I heard represented, every person that came down here and said, "The development department has either changed the policy decision that was made or changed an allocation that was made by members of the community." I just don't see, see, that is the right way to be going. I don't see that we should have to do this. I'd like your view as to why the development department should be making all of these decisions, and why you should not rely on the expertise, knowledge, and interest of the community.
We rely totally upon the knowledge and expertise of all elements of the community that are made known to us, as well as our own professional staff, as well as all items of information that we can possibly get available. And after doing that, we make no decisions. We make recommendations based upon, based upon, to the best of our ability, we make recommendations to city council, and city council is, uh, is charged with making the final decisions.
Well, I, I beg to differ with your characterization, the development department is making no decision. The initial decision was made to split the community into several, several development areas, and as I've, as I've been sitting here in these meetings of council, I've heard them referred to by numbers, and they have absolutely no meaning to me. I just, again, I'd like to say, I, I, nothing that you've said to me, and nothing that you've said to these members of council, adverently explains your position at all. I just, I, I, I wonder if I could ask for a view of the council on this matter?
I think you're very short on why we're going to discuss when we are in terms of the whole, the whole process.
Can I take that as a commitment? Will you, sir, address a particular issue you operate?
We're going to re, we're going to address all the issues as best we can, as we get some sort of consent.
I don't. Don't have a lot to say tonight. Have a good day. I'll not take too long. There are a couple of areas that I'd like to, I guess, just reiterate very quickly. And maybe allow it right now. One is, uh, to the biggest drive to council, the commitment of the university community, as I saw two to three year program and proposal which we submitted to you. I think it's important, in a real sense, at least for ourselves, that we find a few to go for three years, and that's probably not applicable maybe to all, yes, with the other program areas, but I think in the university area where we have a pretty intensive level of planning with council, with the development department, we've got some very specific ideas on the kinds of projects we'd like to implement, and I'm thinking, at least from my sense, my perspective, it makes a lot of sense to talk, not in terms of a one-year program, but in terms of a three-year program. I've talked with Vilton, with H U D, kind of the matter, and I think there's some concurrence on their part along the same thinking, and I guess maybe that's from being a planner, I like to think more than just one year. The, the piece of legislation in front of us, I think, is for one year at this point. I guess I would like to suggest that the development department with council be open to the opportunity to address a three-year proposal about the university community in the immediate future. Secondly, uh, I'd like to speak to the question of the tenant union. There's not a lot that I can add to that that hasn't already been said. I think though, again, from my own perspective, having worked on the area, that I see, well, really, two kinds of leadership that I think need to come together to really make some sense, some solutions out of the problems that are in the university community. And part of that, the leadership is certainly an advocacy on part of the housing needs by tenants, and as has been said by others performing it, and a very, very strong commitment by the community to sort kind of work the tenant union to do. And the second piece of leadership that's needed in the community is on the part of the Columbus Apartment Association and the property owners who own that 15% around the property. And I think we've tried to design in our three-year program a capability to do both of those. We've asked for city council and the development department to, to consider the tenant union as a, as a component part of tenant counseling. We've also earmarked a substantial amount of money toward housing, specifically allocated, uh, one piece up to property owners, but a second piece specifically directed to the tenant landlord. We think that two of those go together. If you're going to take away the tenant union capability, maybe we want to redress our commitment then to giving money to property owners beyond homeowners. We think that's a back issue, and it was, I think, put together in a very sound concept and should be addressed that way. I think, you know, over the long run, that the two, well, it's really been four years the tenant union's been acting, I personally seen a great deal more leadership on the part of the apartment owners to address the problems. And I don't know if that's spied over because of the tenant union, but I think certainly it's been a healthy thing for the university community as a whole. Finally, a last common comment, and is regarding the proposals submitted by President Horton, which discussed the potential development of a sort of a program area coalition, uh, which might, which would in turn be used to, uh, for example, review the housing rehab loan and how that would take place in the specifics and the detail. I, I would like to see, I, I think it's an excellent idea, and I would like to see though the concept expanded to either be a parallel to the technical advisory committee that the development department has now, or added to it. And that's simply to say that there needs to be a vehicle by which the program areas, quote, it's a substantial part of the Columbus community, can participate directly along the development department, council, and developing these programs. I would then view that group's purpose to be a little broader, and to include really a monitoring evaluation, if you will, of say, the 15% cut off the top, how does that program administration money take place, how is it used? In addition, you might look at the discretionary money that, I think that's trying to write word, a little extra pot of money that we have to go into special projects, you know? Any number of questions that I think, you know, could and should be addressed by that group, and to date, uh, there has, I think there's, there's been a lack of a, a vehicle to do that other than public forums, and I think it makes sense to put all those groups together. I guess then I would just sort of like to put a rider on, at least the concept, but forth. I'd like, I think there went from more into Huddle to expand that group in his function. Thank you.
Mr. Huddle. I brought my copy of the Housing and Community Development Proposal, which was circulated throughout the city of Columbus on January 10th, 1975. One, because I thought that maybe we should look at this thing totally, but looking at the time, knowing that many, many of the areas have been touched upon. We are interested in mainly finding out what in fact will happen to the city if we don't have comprehensive housing services provided. don't have comprehensive housing services provided to deal with the problems after On March the twentieth, while in Washington DC, we discussed a program which was proposed by the Department of Development in the city of Columbus, which is the Department of HUD Central Office and their management staff. And we're very elated to know that the city had written into its plan a housing counseling component, with the total amount of dollars that you had written in. One, because they're saying that this is one of the things, or that is actually needed to maintain the old city. If you look at the statistics which were prepared in that document, you'll find, let's look at the north end, the near north side. And I think that if you look at the statistics from the nineteen seventy census tracts, as they appear in the document, as presented by the city of Columbus, and you look under renter occupied units, you'll find that not one census tract within that area is below seventy-five percent of homeowners, or, I'm sorry, renters, of renters. And it's an age-old fact, and HUD is finally looking up and finding that, they saw it in nineteen sixty-eight when they appropriated dollars for housing counseling, however the dollars did not trickle through as, as they suggested, that the only way to maintain inner cities, our old cities, is to provide the kind of counseling, expertise, et cetera, to the people so that they will know how to maintain their proper, their properties. So the question is, what is housing council? It has not been defined. I have a proposal which defines housing council. I have a program ready to go for housing council. We're ready to provide services for the city of Columbus so that people will be able to maintain housing. I've heard people talking about housing counseling in the form of police, fire, maintenance, et cetera. How do you deal with the problems of the old city when you have a person walking out, leaving the property, or either a person or a family which is losing its home because of mortgage problems? That's got to be dealt with. Housing counseling takes in about fifteen different areas, and there are agency, there is an agency in the city of Columbus which has been dealing with it. We've heard from the tenant union, the tenant union was, it was stated that they're a one-way street organization. The one-way street is, yes, they are in fact embarked upon a tenant advocacy role. However, it's necessary to bring about the kind of change which the city needs. We found out that the only way to deal with certain kind of housing problems was to educate the people who had those problems. It has not been a one-way street between Housing Opportunity Center, nor with the Columbus Tenant Association either, because we have expertise, they have expertise. When an area, when people from their area call HOC, one of the things that we definitely will do is refer them to the closest agency where services can be provided. This is what we call the utilization of existing services, a program that was established under the nineteen sixty-eight act, which is model cities. And we think that the only way that it can be resolved, and the problems in our city can be resolved, is through agencies working together. I know there's been an awful lot of speculation, I'm going to get right down to where it is, about a little bit of confusion between two agencies. There's no confusion between two agencies. The only confusion is, is that people would like to, want to believe that there is confusion. We use each other's resources because it's necessary to bring about the kind of change for the city of Columbus so that low and medium income families can in fact have decent, adequate housing. A statement of the program's goal under housing counseling would be to ensure that every low and medium income person can obtain self-care in a decent and sanitary home atmosphere, and that children are reared in an environment that includes sound housing and an adequately managed and equipped home. This is what I think that we are trying to do when we're talking about providing housing, counseling, services on a comprehensive level. We've got it down to a science, we'd like to share it with the city, and I think that the city shouldn't want to share it with us. One, because we know that we can save you dollars. It costs a tenant who's on public assistance to use a rental service in the city of Columbus to get only a list and not be placed thirty-five dollars, thirty-five dollars to sign a contract just to get a list. An agency providing comprehensive housing services provide that same kind of service with a placement, inspection, as well as a piece which deals with legal review of contracts for only twenty-two dollars per unit. We believe that housing counseling should be maintained within, in the program, that it should be funded adequately so that the people who have the greatest need for that kind of service can in fact call upon it. It would keep with the intent of the legislation as passed in nineteen seventy-four, which says that they wanted to provide adequate housing for low, medium income families, they wanted to maintain the inner city or old city housing stock. And the only way to maintain that which has been done or completed or rehabilitated is to make sure that people have the services when they need them.